All right, good evening, everyone. We're going to get started. Tonight is the regularly scheduled meeting of the North Penn School District Finance Committee. Today's November 12th, 2019. I'll call the meeting to order. Why don't we begin with the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the first thing on the agenda this evening is the approval of the minutes from October 7th. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
No.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right, the minutes are approved. Is there any public comment this evening?
Now, I would write this, but unfortunately, the pen is suffering from lack of ink. But I will fill that at a later date. I will. Thank you. Don't start my time until I get this down, okay? Okay. My name is William Patchell. I live at 404 Bonnie Lane in Langedale. It's really Montgomery Township. And I'm here to speak on the topic of sustainability taxes. What's important, what's not important? And as we go through the budgetary process, we all know that Act One will be going from 2.4 to 2.6. That doesn't mean we have to approach the bar. We could actually be a little cautious and hold back. I believe like a family budget, what you have to do is look at your expenditures. This is what we might need next year. Like, a family says, "Well, we have a total income of $76,000," right? But the way this board operates is says, "We need this, 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 this." And he said, "Okay, we're going to approve this." Wow, we need another $10 million. So, you know, I think what we have to do is have greater long-range planning. We need to prioritize what the expenditures will be. We have wonderful staff. I went with Dr. Dietrich. It was a wonderful thing about bus to the future. I went on a propane bus. Those are absolutely fantastic. That is a really good expenditure on logistical support. Mr. Shiroki's smiling over there. I said, "This is really wonderful. We have 14 buses. We only got 100 to go." So, I believe that the transportation system is of utmost priority because we need to lower our carbon footprint. That's very important. We need to get off of diesel. We need to lower the kilowatts that we use in the electric. We need to, I'm looking for a trash, zero trash generation within 10 years. And we need to remember that everything we do, although it may seem small collectively, it's like sand on the beach. This is a really large beach. Yeah, there's billions of, but that's the way the budget. We have to look at every single expenditure. We have to scrutinize it and make everything is going good. I talked to Christine Johnson over there about the expenditure for the musical instruments. They were doing a really fine job. Some instruments are, and then they looked at it and scrutinized it very well, and that's going very well. I tell you that the music program in this district is beyond, it's unbelievable. And I met each of these people. I met various educators starting out. I am so impressed with the faculty that you have assembled here. It's almost unbelievable. If you were playing football, you'd have won the Super Bowl at least six times in a row. They'd all be wearing Super Bowl rings. But I want to say, please, when you do your planning, let's do it academics first. I'd love to do Crawford Stadium, but maybe we can take that in small pieces. 10 million, 12 million, 14? We need to examine all of these things thoroughly. Examine it again and make sure it's sustainable and accomplishing what we want to do. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bill. Anybody else? All right. We will then move on to our, the rest of our agenda. And the first item is the 1819 audit report. And Mr. Furman is here to give a presentation.
Yes, welcome, Mr. Furman. We do have two documents posted in Board Docs. We'll have one on the screen. This is a summary of the audit presentation. And the other document is our draft financial statements, which we'll be asking for your approval at the November action meeting. So, Mr. Furman, welcome.
Thanks, thanks for having me. We've completed the audit. As Steve said, we put together a draft of the financial statements, and all the numbers are set at this point. So, that's why I'm out here now, going over the draft with you. As in prior years, I put together an overall summary of the larger documents. So, I'll walk you through that first. The first page is just the agenda items I'm going to be going over. The page after that, require communications. We'll be issuing a clean, unmodified audit opinion on the financial statements and also on the single audit work. And the single audit work is the testing that's required based on the federal funds that you get. The federal government dictates how much testing we have to do and what type of testing. Statement of auditing standards, 114 is an audit committee letter. Whenever we issue an audit opinion, we're required to issue this report to communicate to the highest level of the client, which would be the school board, if we had any problems or significant issues with the audit. And we have nothing to report there. A 115 report would be issued if we determined that there were material weaknesses in your internal control system. And that, we didn't identify that at all, so the 115 report will not be issued. The page after that is just an overall summary of some of the audit work that we do. We start with downloading 100% of your trial balance activity into our audit software. We review the internal control system. There were no significant audit adjustments. For cash, we do reconciliations, and we also confirm Act 72 collateral. So, whenever you have a bank account that goes beyond FDIC coverage, the bank's required to pledge federal collateral for your account as safety. That's under Act 72. Capital assets, we actually vouch those to invoices. Accounts payable, we're trying to do a search for unrecorded liabilities. And debt and revenue, a lot of the testing there we do with third-party confirmations, just to confirm the actual activity. With all, after downloading your entire general ledger, we run pivot tables on the expenses. So, each expense item, we run month-to-month activity. We compare it to prior years. So, we're looking for unusual fluctuations, gaps in check sequences, duplicate payments. Again, anything unusual that would jump out of the testing from our software, we then tie those back to supporting documentation. The payroll analysis, we're looking, we layer out the employee salaries to determine that they're reasonable based on their position. Again, for the accounts payable, we're looking at subsequent disbursements to make sure there's a good cutoff. Vendor tests, we just summarize the vendor activity, and we compare it to prior-year activity. Most of the larger vendors are common on a year-to-year basis. And we do some testing of the student activity funds. A lot of the testing in that area, the data extraction, is determined for fraud transactions. So, we actually look to the payroll system, and in there, we're looking for duplicate addresses or duplicate accounts for direct deposit. We're also matching up the payroll records with the vendor records to see if there's any employees that are showing up as vendors. And we feel that we really need the audit software to be able to do that type of testing on this many transactions. We also run what's called a Benford's test, which is the next two pages. And Benford, as I mentioned in prior years, was a mathematician who came up with a formula that based on the size of a population, so many transactions should start with the digit 1 and lower amounts to 9. And we have over 100 government clients, and it's amazing how this usually comes into play where nothing really jumps out. So, actually, looking at number one, you had almost 37,000 transactions that started with the digit 1 and lowered the amounts. So, nothing jumped out using the first digit. The next page is we ran a two-digit Benford, and there, there were some spikes. And we actually drilled down into that activity, and we do our testing based on the spiked areas. And we had nothing negative to report on our testing. The last two pages is just an overall financial statement summary. A government financial statement really only has one year of data in it, so this hopefully gives you some trend information. And there's two sets of financials in your final financial statement. One's called a government-wide financial statement. And that's the full accrual method of accounting, where you capitalize your fixed assets. Debt's recorded as liability, and you work your way down to net position or net equity. So, there was an increase in the cash and the investment numbers. Some of that dealt with debt that was incurred but not spent yet. Tax receivables actually dropped a little bit. There were no significant capital projects in the current fiscal year. So, that's why when you record depreciation expense, the capital assets actually dropped in 2019. And one thing to note on the capital assets, in theory, we're depreciating those over their estimated useful life. So, at the end of 2019, you had costs of about $350 million, and you had accumulated depreciation of about $158 million. So, in theory, it's showing that you have more than half the life left of the assets of the district. The debt did go up from the new debt issued in 2019. Compensated absences is accrued vacation and sick time, that had a slight increase. The OPEB liability, that's other post-employment benefits. So, it's basically medical coverage that's provided to retirees. And that and the pension liability, those numbers come from Peasers. So, whatever the, your share of that liability is, they report to us, and they put it on the financial statement. So, you'll see on the positive side, the OPEB liability and the pension liability actually had some significant decreases. And basically, with the pension, it's based on favorable market performance on the investments of Peasers. So, that's difficult to project that each year, but there was a favorable decrease in 2019. So, that leaves net position or net equity as a deficit of $228 million. But when you add back the pension and the OPEB, which are long-term liabilities, you actually have an overall pretty strong balance sheet. The property taxes had an increase in 2019, along with the earned income tax and grant revenue. The expenses under the full accrual method are a little bit unusual, showing decreases because you had a decrease in the OPEB and the pension liability. So, I've summarized the expenditures later on, on the next page, for the general fund, which will actually show you the, a better performance, anyway. The governmental or the general fund is reported separately. That wound up 2019, a little bit over $41 million. And that's 16% of general fund revenue. And credit rating agencies shoot for anywhere from an 8% to 12% as a reasonable fund balance. So, you're slightly above that number. It also provided you with some ability to commit the fund balance to Peasers and also self-insurance. So, you'll see that in the general fund detail. So, the general fund itself had a small surplus of about $196,000. And that was after a $3.3 million transfer from the general fund over to the capital fund. The food service fund did have a surplus for the year, but since they did a piece of the OPEB and the pension liability, that's why that net position is showing as a negative number. And one comment on the budget to actual, the revenues came in about $2.9 million favorable budget to actual, and the expenditures came in about $3 million favorable. Both were about, within about 1%. So, they look like large numbers, but on a percentage basis, for your total budget, 1% is pretty tight results. And the last page, again, I tried to summarize the general fund expenditures without the distortion of the pension liability change. So, you see there, the instruction is relatively stable over the three years. Increase in the support service numbers, non-instructional were pretty comparable. The debt service, there was a decrease in 2019. And then the transfers out from the general fund to the capital fund, again, was about $3.3 million in 2019 and about $3.7 million in 2018. So, that's a quick run-through of the larger document. Overall, the audit went well. We get great cooperation from the staff. Again, we actually download 100% of your activity before we even get out here. So, a lot of the audit is planned back in our office before we start the fieldwork.
Any questions for Mr. Furman? Okay. Thank you, Ed.
Well, thanks for having us. Thank you. Thanks.
With this, we're asking for the Finance Committee to move this to the full board on November 21st for approval of the audit report.
All right, and I will move the-
Sorry, can I just have one point of clarification? It looks, so going back to the beginning, it's, one of the things that you are, the data extraction activities with student activities funds?
Yes.
Are those the budgets of the members of coordinating council groups? Or is that something different?
Not something different.
Okay.
Yes, this is entirely, think of clubs and classes run by students through fundraising activity in school.
Activities.
Correct.
Okay. Extracurriculars that are happening in school.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, well, I would, I will move that we, will the report, the report will be completely finalized by next week? Is that-
That's our goal.
Okay, all right. Well, I would move that as long as that's the case, we put it on the agenda for next week. Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor? Aye. Anybody opposed? All right, that will move forward. Ed, thank you again, as always. Thank you for your work on behalf of the district. All right, the next item is the budget transfers for October.
So, we have a little bit over $8 million in budget transfers for the month. October represents the first month of the fiscal year. We were able to do the transfers. And the lion's share of the transfers are due to some PD guidance with, we received with respect to trying to get the accounting a little more accurate with precision, especially in the special education area, in terms of the particular exceptionality of the student. So, we'll have more accurate data. So, a lot of the budget transfers are relative to that. And also, we did have some budget transfers for the federal title program carryover amounts. So, that represents the largest portion. The $8 million is a large amount compared to previous years during this time, but a lot of it is just to correct and make sure we have more accurate accounting in the special ed area.
Anybody have any questions? All right, I'll move that we put the transfers on the agenda for next week for board action.
A second.
All in favor? Aye. Anybody opposed? All right, those will move forward. And our next action item is the advertising for bids for the propane buses.
Yes, we're asking for the Finance Committee to move to the November 21st action agenda, the approval of advertising of bids for an additional 783-passenger propane buses. We do have the money in the budget. This would make 11 school bus purchases in the current fiscal year, propane purchases. I do want to let you know, we did apply for United States EPA grants for these buses, $20,000 per bus. So, we'll hear probably in January if we were successful with these grant applications. But regardless of the grant money, we'd like to proceed with the purchase of these buses. It is budgeted, and we've had great results so far with the 14 propane buses that we do have. Also, I did include a link in the public content aboard Docs, the video from the propane tank ribbon-cutting ceremony, and an article dealing with propane buses and actually demonstrating that improves academic performance. There's a link there as well. And finally, under the executive content, I received an email today from our maintenance supervisor at the garage, and he just put a little blurb in there about the propane buses, how much more cost-effective it is when you're doing a simple oil change compared to the diesel buses. He has some financial information in there, how much cheaper it is. So, again, we'd ask for your approval to move this in November 21st meeting, approval to advertise for bids for the buses. And we anticipate that we would open these bids and award these bids either at the January or February school board meeting.
I just want to comment that I love seeing them throughout the community and love that they're marked with the green bluebird symbol. And I think there's a lot of awareness that goes into seeing those on the road, and it's really helpful. I also, in our communication with teachers and individuals at schools, we often know that there are behavior issues that are connected to a particular bus. There's an issue with, you know, something happening, and I just, after we rode the bus and you gave us that opportunity, they're just, they're so quiet. And I, I would like to see if there's a possibility of using some of these larger buses that we're now purchasing to target some of those buses of concern and giving those tools to principals to be, who are trying to address the behavior issues on the bus and testing to see if lowering the noise of the background noise helps with, if it's linked to behavior.
It would be a good case study for us. Good suggestion.
I have a question. I'm curious. When we were discussing the original purchase last year, you had talked about the average age of our bus fleet and how we needed to make aggressive moves to address that. I think it was about 15 years or some such. Where are we at at this point after this purchase, if we, when we make this purchase?
I'll have to get back to you on that, Mr. Fusco. I don't know the precise number. I want to make sure I give you a precise number. But I think last year, before we started purchasing the propane buses, we were about 14 average age. So, now that we have 14 new buses and we've divested not only 14 of the old diesel buses, we divested a couple that were used as spares that just weren't operable anymore. So, that'll also bring down the average age. So, I'll get back to you at the next finance meeting, if I could, please.
Okay, great, thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right, well, I will move that we move forward with authorizing the bids. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, all right. Any particular orders, Steve, on the informational items? Do you want to walk through them?
Sure, we can start with the first one. We have the 19, I'm sorry, the 2021. It's hard to say that, 20, 2020. My how time flies. The building-level budget allocations for next year. Kristen's going to handle that, because we've already started the budget development process for the next fiscal year. And one of the first things we start with is basically providing an allocation to our instructional buildings for their expenditures for the upcoming year. So, Kristen's going to cover that. We have two documents posted in Board Docs for this.
So, the two documents posted, one is the per-pupil allocation by building. We do provide an allocation for four categories, the first being total students in the building, and then an additional funding source for our special education gifted and ELL students. We did freeze the allocation, the per-pupil allocation. Each building will be adjusted based on those active enrollments, however. So, you would see a little bit of a fluctuation from last year's budget to this year's, but the per-pupil has been locked in. When you consider the per-pupil allocation, what does that cover at the buildings? It does not cover the salary and benefits of the teachers. It's rather, it's to help support the building with supplies and maybe some additional curriculum needs that aren't coming from the central office area. Consistently, over the last five of the last six years, the buildings have left approximately 24% to 26% of their per-pupil allocation unspent. So, we do feel that freezing the allocation at this time will still allow the buildings to meet the needs that they have. The total amount of the per-pupil allocation in comparison to the total budget is approximately half a percentage point. So, it's not a significant amount of our budget, but it is, it is important to the buildings. So, at this time, we're going to freeze that. If we have a need to reevaluate our budget position later in the year, this would be somewhere we could look to cut if necessary. And that is all. Do you have any questions?
Are you looking at schools who are underspending and, like, are they, is it across the board? Or is it some areas over another and?
Yeah, I mean, it's pretty consistent across all the buildings. I mean, there are a variety of levels, you know, maybe like a 6% on one and a little bit higher on another. That is the second document that you have available to you that will indicate that. But overall, yes, they are, they're spending underneath consistently.
It looks like every school has unspent funds.
Yeah.
Like, it doesn't even look like any of the schools are maxed out.
Yeah, the principals definitely are being conscious of their spend, which we appreciate.
And where does North Bridge fall under, high school?
North Bridge actually doesn't get a per-pupil allocation. They do, much like the departments, where they build out their budget and their needs.
Okay.
Okay, moving on, speaking of the budget, the 2021 preliminary budget approval timeline. It's hard to believe in two short months, we will be presenting a preliminary budget for the board's consideration for adoption. We have an early timeline this year due to the 2020 presidential election, so everything is accelerated. So, before we leave for the holiday break in December, we pretty much have to have the preliminary budget finished. So, that's in a little bit over a month. We'll have the preliminary budget pretty much wrapped up. So, I do want to let you know, a couple key dates. Actually, next week, we will be having budget hearings with the administrators that are responsible for the various departments. That includes things like facilities, transportation, curriculum, special education, human resources, and the such. December 6th, the 2021 Peasers rate will be certified. And then on December 10th, that's the deadline we have for the buildings and the departments to have their budget submitted to us. And then 1220, as I mentioned, the first draft of the preliminary budget will be finalized. And then we have to have a notification published in the newspaper and our website by the 23rd. We have a January 6th Finance Committee meetings. This will be the board's first look at what the 2021 budget looks like at that finance meeting. Not a lot of turnaround then from the 6th to the 16th. At the 16th end, at the action meeting, we'll be asking for the adoption of the preliminary budget. And I do want to mention once again that I really view the preliminary budget as a first draft of the overall budget. It's really where we commence the budget process. The budget process is a three-phase process. Starts with the preliminary budget, moves on to the proposed final budget, and then the final budget adoption in June. So, we work really hard to get that first draft put together, but a lot of modifications are made from January up through June based on new information. So, right now, we're crafting that preliminary budget, and we have no idea what the Peasers rate is. We haven't finalized staffing for next year. We have no idea what we might receive from the state. So, there's a lot of unknown variables that go into that first draft of the budget. And as we get new information, we certainly update the budget and make it more precise. But just want to make you aware that we do have a really short timeline this year for that preliminary budget adoption. Any questions? Preliminary budget.
Seeing none?
Next item?
Assessment appeals?
So, under our assessment appeal policy, you might recall, in the summer, we filed 41 district-initiated real estate tax assessment appeals, per our policy. Policy was adopted in April 2019, so we adhered to that policy and filed those 41 appeals. So, the process for assessment appeals is that, the first step is, a hearing is conducted by the Montgomery County Board of Assessment to hear the merits of the appeal. 41 appeals. 39 of the 41 parcels, there was no change in the assessed value, which is very common. It's very uncommon for the Board of Assessment to alter the assessed value. Even though we had sales data for all 41 properties, recent sales data that demonstrated the assessed value should be higher, in 39 of the cases, the county made no change. In one of the cases, the county actually reduced the assessment. So, you might be thinking, "Well, how can that happen? You filed an appeal looking to get the assessment increased." Well, in this particular case, there was a fire at the parcel, so the county lowered the assessed value due to the fire. So, we will probably file a future appeal on that property once it's rebuilt. And one parcel, we were actually able to negotiate a settlement with the property owner prior to the hearing. So, at the hearing, both parties stipulated for an increase in the assessed value, and actually resulted in $15,600 in additional annual revenue for the school district for that one parcel. So, in that case, the property owner pretty much conceded. I concur. The property is under assessed. I will agree to increase the assessment. Those are the nice ones. Those are clean, those are easy, reduces legal expenses, reduces appraisal expenses. So, we're happy with that. So, that leaves, what do we do now with the properties of 39 parcels that had no change? So, after reviewing the information with our solicitor, we've decided that 30 of those parcels will be appealed to the Court of Common Pleas. And the reason why 39 weren't appealed, some of those parcels dealt with a subdivision of land. So, once the land is subdivided, there'll be housing developments, and there'll be new, higher assessed values on the property. So, those probably aren't worthwhile since the plots of land are currently being subdivided. But the other parcels, we felt are, are under assessed and should be put forth to the Court of Common Pleas. In all those cases, just like the one we did settle, we will still attempt to settle these before they go to court. That's the intention, because we do have sales data on these properties. So, we'll continue to keep you posted. We're hopeful that we'll see increases on all 30. We feel it's warranted, especially with the recent sale. We feel it's warranted, especially with the recent sale.
Bond refunding update?
Okay, we did have the bond auction, which was the refunding. We call it the Series A of 2019, refunded the 2013, 14, and 15 bonds. The auction was held in October, and the auction resulted in net savings for the school district of, net savings of $753,000, which was much higher than the, the last estimate we had of $543,000. So we're very pleased with the results of the auction. TD Securities was the winning bidder, and the majority of the savings will occur in the 2122 fiscal year. About 700,000 of the savings will occur in the 2122 fiscal year. And we'll close on the bond on December 2nd, on the new issue. And our Moody's bond rating didn't stay at a double A1. And with that said, though, I do want to let you know, we were really, 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 really close to an upgrade to a triple A. And I can tell you that because not only did we have our, our conference call with Moody's, but there were three follow-up phone calls after that initial call, which is very unusual, just asking additional detailed follow-up questions. And when the analyst contacted me to let me know that we were going to stay at a double A1, he said it was splitting hairs. He said it was splitting hairs. But we're not, we don't have the level of fund balance quite at the level that the triple A bond rated districts have. That was really what resulted in remaining at a double A1. But we're certainly proud of a double A1. We are in rare company, having a double A1. Only 18 school districts in the Commonwealth have a double A1 or higher. So it's nothing to fret about. We were hopeful for the triple A and the upgrade, but perhaps we'll be more successful next time around. Any questions on the refunding? Definitely a positive win for the taxpayers, saving over $700,000.
All right, the Meritorious Budget Award submission.
Yep, another informational item, and kudos to Kristen, who did the lion's share of the work on the Meritorious Budget Award application. It's been submitted to the Association of School Business Officials International. If we receive the award, it'll be the fifth year that we would have received it, the MBA Award, Meritorious Budget Award. And only 10 school districts in Pennsylvania have received the award in the past year, and North Penn remains the only school district in Montgomery County to be recognized by ASBO for the Meritorious Budget Award. And the actual document is attached in board docs, and I think it's an excellent communication tool for the community. It's quite lengthy, it's 147 pages, but it is in plain English, where somebody from the community, if they really want to drill down into what makes up the North Penn budget, I would refer them to this document first and foremost. Certainly not those PD documents that we need to complete, the PD 2028. I mean, those are unreadable for the average person. This document is a readable document that can be shared with the community. So thank you again to Kristen for the submission, and we should know probably in about a month whether we receive the award or not. We'll keep you posted on that.
Okay. Thank you, Kristen, for your work on that. December Finance Committee meeting?
Okay, next time. I feel like I have to slow down because we're at record pace here. Like, we might finish by 6:30, which, we can't do that. We can't let that happen, right? So December Finance Committee was actually scheduled to coincide the same evening as the board reorganization on December 2nd. We typically don't have a December Finance Committee meeting, so we're recommending the meeting be canceled. Nothing is really pressing for the December meeting. January meeting will be a hot meeting with the presentation of the preliminary budget. So with the swearing in of board members on December 2nd reorganization, we felt that was better perhaps just to leave that meeting, just a reorganization and not have the finance meeting. So we're recommending canceling that meeting.
Anybody have any questions or concerns about that? Okay.
Okay, next item is the NAP Act 34 hearing. An Act 34 hearing is required by the Pennsylvania Department of Education, because we are actually expanding NAP by more than 20%, the footprint for the new construction piece. So even though this project is not eligible for PlanCon subsidy, because PlanCon really doesn't exist right now, it's in a moratorium, we still need to comply with the PD regulations for this Act 34 hearing. So the hearing will be held at NAP Elementary School on Tuesday, January 7th. And in board docs, I linked a public hearing notice draft, which will actually appear, a resolution appear on the November 21st action meeting for your consideration, and approved a resolution so we can do the official advertising. And then under executive content is a draft of what the actual booklet will look like. We will have a booklet produced as part of the Act 34 requirements. Right now, the booklet is up to, it's lengthy, 49 pages, and that's something that will be, you know, something distributed to the community. Basically talks about the options that were explored for the project, the scope of the facility study, the cost, the design, the need for the project. That will all be communicated the evening of the Act 34 hearing. So we're pleased to report that Mr. Gilmer's team was able to accommodate and have the hearing right at NAP Elementary School. So we certainly encourage the NAP community to come out. This will be an excellent opportunity to see the latest design by the Schrader Group, hear information about the cost, and just talk about, again, the justification and the rationale for the project. So whatever you can do to encourage the NAP family and community to come out that night, we'd appreciate it. Questions on the Act 34 hearing?
I believe the NAP Home and Schools Association is working to try to have activities or even childcare available so that parents and the community members can come.
Excellent.
We're really excited on that.
Excellent. Let's pack the room.
All right, and finally, the Lansdale Tax Collector Audit.
Okay, we had three tax collector audits for county or 2018. This is the third. The other two were presented last month. The Lansdale one took a little longer to complete by the orders, but like the other two we had completed, which were aligned Lexington and Montgomery, there were no issues whatsoever with the Lansdale Tax Collector Audit. It's actually referred to as AUP, Agreed Upon Procedures. They do a number of testing. It's also done by Mr. Furman's firm, Malley. They do a number of testing of the transactions and deposits and timeliness of the deposits, and in all cases, there were no issues with the transaction details. So we're happy that was the case.
Great. And do we have to, we don't have to approve that at the board, at the full board level?
No, no, we have not in the past.
Okay.
It's agreed upon procedures and not like an official, like, audit report.
Okay, all right. Are there any questions on the financial reports?
Just a couple notes on the financial reports. I do want to point out that it's pretty clear now with the third Fed reduction in interest rates so far this fiscal year, that we will not meet our budget for investment income for the current year. So we're projecting right now a shortfall of about $100,000. We're hoping there's no additional Fed rate cuts. I think the consensus right now is that there'll be a pause, and there won't be any change, at least for the next Fed meeting, which is in December. So that does have a budgetary impact. And not only is it a $100,000 shortfall in our budget, keep in mind, in the past two years, that was one source of additional revenue well beyond what our budget figure was. In fact, I think it was over $1 million in additional income the past two years in investment income with a rising interest rate environment. Now we are in a declining interest rate environment, and that will have an effect on our ability to meet our revenue number for the upcoming year. So we, we're riding the wave of increased investment income over the past two years. That's not going to be the case this fiscal year. In terms of earned income tax, that's obviously something we continue to monitor very closely. We're okay so far this fiscal year. You may have read in the past month, though, that Merck announced layoff of 500 individuals at the West Point site. And Merck has indicated to us that the majority of their employees live within about a 15-minute driving radius, which puts a lot of those individuals being laid off in the North Penn School District. So that potentially could have some level of impact on our earned income tax in the upcoming year. So we'll continue to watch that, as well as our realty transfer tax. Our real estate tax payments have been pretty strong so far this year, so we're not seeing any indications of, like, a precursor to a recession in terms of our real estate tax payments or anything like that. But the one piece of bad news unfortunately is, it's pretty evident to us right now that we will not meet our investment income budget figure for the current fiscal year.
Okay. All right. Any other questions on the financial reports? All right, then we will move to our second public comment period. Is there any public comment?
I hope in three more minutes, I'll be able to convey some of the ideas which I have. I was speaking with the, one of the assistants with Senator Colette, recently elected to replace Senator Greenlee. And they were very, very cooperative with me, and they shared that there's constant dialogue up in Harrisburg, how they want to Senate Bill 76, which would eliminate property taxes altogether, and you would be receiving the majority of your money from Harrisburg, which would put the revenue portion out of your control, and you would have to supplement it with cookie sales and, you know, cakes and things like that. So you have to understand that in the, in the accounting world, most of that presentation was a giant rearview mirror. What you need to be cognizant of and be aware of, the constant changing of the employment situation, wage compensation, retirements, and everything, these are out, out up ahead. Some of these things are going to be rather large craters. I mean, they're really big potholes. And the thing that's going to change is, you know that we're on the verge of another recession coming up. And Merck, I noticed their stock is about $86, so I'm sure that helped maintain the $86, letting 500 people go, you know, we can buy more stock back. Most of the, most of the market gains is today is because the companies are buying their stock back. Because in that thin veneer of management, gee, I'm able to swap my stock for a whole bunch of money, and now I'm going down to Florida like our president is, and of course, there's no state income tax down there, and I, it'll be nice and warm for the winter time. So, and many, many people in this district are on the verge of retiring. I don't think they're going to stay here. I don't know anybody that really loves the snow. You're too old to go snowboarding, so maybe you'll, you'll make it on a, you know, a tube or something. But it's very, very important that you analyze and what, what's going to be, not what was. The types of building that we have, maybe what they'll do is they'll say, we want more green in this thing. Can't you use more used building materials? Can't you change the style? Can it be more little, you know, less offensive? You know, so there's a lot of changes. You know that the price escalation for the prevailing wage and Davis Bacon, you are having a running, you are a running race, that, that the wages are going up. And I said, now that the electricians make about $52 an hour, and that's about $100,000 a year, I hope you're able to get a couple more lights in the hallway before you can't afford any of them, and you just have a nightlight. So, you know, you need to think about a lot of things that aren't even here yet. And that's the most important thing in planning. You have to do it in small, measured steps so that you have room to like, well, I got an alternate plan. So I know it's a very hard job, and I enjoy coming here because I think I do make a little bit of a contribution into the dialogue. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Patchell. Any other public comment this evening? All right, seeing none. The items that are recommended for the action meeting next week are the approval of the 1819 audit report, the budget transfers for the month of October 2019, and the advertising of the bids for the propane buses. At this time, the next scheduled Finance Committee meeting is January 6th, 2020, at 6 o'clock PM in this room. And with that, I would move, move that we, what's that? January 6th, 2020, at 6 o'clock. And with that, I would move, and I would move that we adjourn. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're done. Thank you.